Susan in yet?
Not yet.
Oh, she's in as a attendee, hold on. Okay.
So good?
So we're good.
All right, I have to call this meeting to order. Council Special Voluntard Meeting, June 10th, 2020, time is 7:36 PM. Advocate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mail to the Ridgewood News as a record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law of the schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call please.
Deputy Mayor Newton?
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay, Councilman Seaton?
Here.
Councilman Voight? Yep, he's here. Councilman Walsh? And Mayor Hachey?
My dogs are barking, so I'm trying to keep my phone on.
Okay, okay.
Here. Comments on the public? None? Go to the agenda, items, financial reports, who wants a second? Jeff?
I'm having a hard time hearing, I'm sorry. Is that somebody's, I am hearing Jeff sounds like underwater. As I've heard before.
Jeff, are you underwater?
Maybe you're out of space.
Okay. I hear a squealing.
Yeah, me too.
I don't know what it is, it's like some feedback or something.
Susan, it's coming through on your mic.
My mic?
Yeah, you're the one that has the feedback.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, good. Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay.
All right, approval of minutes, who wants a second?
I'll second.
We have one proclamation, Bernie, you want to take that one?
Yes, I'll take that.
All right. We have in the award winners. We have the resolutions for Ridgewood Water, who wants to move?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a public hearing, Chapter 265, vehicle traffic, various parking regulations, who wants a second?
I'll second.
Okay, who wants to move?
I'll move.
Bye Bernie, see you second, three, Susan, okay. Public hearing, Chapter 145, fees for overnight parking permit. Who wants a second?
Second.
All right, Jeff, second. Second, and who wants to move?
I'll move.
Michael, all right. Renovations to the Elks Club, second?
I'll second.
And move?
I'll move.
Okay. And then we have the batch of resolutions here. Who wants to move?
I'll move.
Heather?
Yes.
I had asked the last one to be pulled off the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The phone?
Yeah.
The phone, okay, that's fine.
So we'll pull that, okay?
Sure, not a problem.
All right. And then we have the last, last one, I guess we'll have two to be regular fold, but so temporarily suspend enforcement of certain ordinances to permit the reopening of the business in Ridgewood Central businesses, if you want to move?
I'll move.
I can move.
Mike, Jeff, you want a second?
Yeah, I can second.
All right, perfect.
So it's just those two, 171 and 172?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
All right, nice and short.
We're staying on the Zoom though, for the meeting, right?
The same one, right, so you can do whatever, so let me just get, if nothing else to discuss, I'll just remind you that we do have a meeting next week, it's at 7:30, it's going to be discussion items and then going into a special public meeting, so everything we discuss that night will be on that special public meeting. And then that's that, okay, that'll be our last meeting.
Okay.
And then the reorg is on July 1st at noon. The continuing council people will meet at 11:30 AM that day to go through the reorg agenda, so that you know who move in second, and then noon will be for the rest, okay? And we are planning to have it here, so hopefully we'll be able to, I know that we'll be able to accommodate everyone and move, we'll just move the chairs, they're gathered by family, so that's how we're going to do it.
Max of 50?
It's less, thankfully. It was over the 25, but it's less, that's the good news.
Yeah. And are we still going to stream it? Because I know
Right.
A lot of people want to watch the new council members come in.
Yeah, it'll definitely be on Zoom, but we're also going to stream it.
Yeah, we're going to stream it, I'm going to take pictures still for everybody.
We'll just, yeah, so we'll.
Well, since you have a little bit of time, I'm going to take a little break, I'll be back.
Yeah, let me just have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll move.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead. We're all set.
Trying to mute yourself.
Is Dylan like a voice talking to me?
Yes.
He talks, I know where you are. That's funny. I'm trying to mute myself and then I'm going to hide.
Okay, you muted yourself, now you just turn off your video if you want. There you go. Oh, no, you moved over. Your video's still on. There you go.
Just everybody, the public meeting will be starting at 8 o'clock. You're on mute. Mute. Yes, yes, yes. Ha, 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 ha. That was funny, Susan.
Sorry Heather, we're just having Zoom fun. Dylan, you have to fix your camera so people just don't see the top of your head.
It's a...
There.
There we go.
Now we got him. We don't have it squeaking right now, Susan, not right now.
Arndt, excuse me?
Oh, now I jinxed it.
Oh, so I think the thing is that, I think I can fix this actually. Let me see. How? Is it there now, or is it off?
No, after you stopped it was, but it was okay when you were talking.
It's much better than it was before, you could almost not hear you because it was screeching the whole time, so now it just gives a little bit when you're done, it's not.
It's probably a thing that was setting Bernadette's dogs off.
Maybe.
Hi Dylan, we're on, we're good?
Is that better?
Bernie?
It's the other way for Bernie.
Wait, is that better now?
Yes.
Yes, it's good.
Okay. Okay. There she is.
All right, Bernie's back, we're ready to go.
We're ready.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Ridgewood Village Council Regular Public Meeting, June 10th, 2020, the time is 8 PM. Advocate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mail to the Ridgewood News as a record and by submission to all persons entitled to same, as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Newton?
Here.
Councilman Seaton?
Here.
Councilman Voight?
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Here.
And Mayor Hachey?
Here. Please join me for the flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join us in a moment of silence for the brave men and women serving our nation's armed forces and as first responders and all those who have been impacted and have been fighting on the front lines against COVID-19. Thank you. I move the bills, claims and vouchers and statement of funds on hand as of May 31st, 2020, be accepted as submitted.
Sorry, who said second?
Jeff.
Okay, I couldn't hear you. Newton?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Voight? Walsh?
Yes.
Hachey?
Yes. I move that the village council minutes of May 22nd, June 25th, October 23rd, November 6th and December 4th, 2019, and January 8th, February 5th, March 2nd and April 1st, 2020, having been reviewed by the village council and now available in the village clerk's office, be approved as submitted.
Newton?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Voight?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hachey?
Yes. We have a proclamation tonight, BCD USA, National Pollinator Week, Councilman Walsh.
Whereas pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas for decades, the village of Ridgewood has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas the village of Ridgewood provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. Now therefore be it resolved that the village council, the village of Ridgewood, does hereby proclaim the third week of June as the village of Ridgewood's observance of National Pollinator Week and the village of Ridgewood as an affiliate of Bee City USA, and urges all its residents to recognize this observance. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a special presentation of award winners tonight. Dylan, is everybody on? Are we bringing them on as panelists for currently?
And Burton? Brandon Lee? Don't see Teddy? And I think, oh. Okay, all three of them are added, they just have to enable their video and audio.
Okay.
Okay.
There's Brandon?
Hello.
And I go?
Yeah.
And Ann? And Ann.
Connected, I don't think she's...
Do we have Theodore as well?
I do not see Theodore on.
There's Ann.
Hi Ann, how are you? Did Theodore give you confirmation that he'll be on? Do we know?
I have not heard from him, no.
Okay. You don't see anybody on cue, right Dylan?
Negative.
Okay, so we have a very special presentation tonight. It's hard to believe, but in the middle of this pandemic, the Census, US Census 2020 launched on April 1st, and there was a lot of coordination prior to that, late 2019. I had been approached by our colleagues in the Census Bureau, and they were talking to us about kind of the, how Ridgewood did in the last census, 2010, and there were some concerns because we were undercounted. It was estimated that we were undercounted by over 30%. So one of the things that the Census Committee recommended this time around was a creation of a complete count committee to ensure that we have higher participation, and the complete count committee really was meant to bring in different groups within the community to be able to have a broader reach and get the word out about the census. So that committee was made up by myself, by the village manager, Ridgewood Public Schools, Federated HSA, members in the Ridgewood Public Library, members of H Friendly Ridgewood, also the YMCA, US Census Bureau, and the League of Women Voters of Ridgewood. And tonight we have Ann Burton Walsh, who's the Census Committee Chair for the League of Women Voters. And you know, one of the ideas that came about was that this complete count committee would sponsor an essay contest for high school students. And it was to get our, you know, we had posed some questions to the students and getting their thoughts as to the importance of the census. And it was amazing, the responses that we received. We had over, I mean, it was about six, six or so essays that we were really kind of the finalists. And we ended up with a winner, and then we also have the second and third place as well. So we have with us tonight Brandon Lee from the RHS Classic 2021. We also have Aiko Shinazi. Brandon Lee was the winner of the contest. And he, I'll let Ann fill in on the process and a little bit more about in terms of the details. Ann?
Sure, yes. We received 46 submissions, and our process was that we actually redacted names and just assigned each essay a number. And then the league helped narrow down the submissions to the top 12. And then the complete count committee, which consisted of the participants that Ramon just listed, went through the top 12 and selected our winner, Brandon Lee. And then we also had six students who received honorable mention. And the second and third placed for honorable mention were Theodore Mole and Aiko Shinazi. And their essays were just outstanding in terms of the breadth and depth of research that they did. And their essays were thoughtfully written and well-edited, and they really are very compelling pieces that I think when published will convince those residents who have not yet filled out the census to do so. And I think we also increased the census response just by doing the contest, because I think a lot of the students talked to their parents, their friends, who then talked to their parents. And so we saw a bump up in the self-response rate after we launched the essay contest. But I just want to really congratulate Brandon and Aiko, as well as Teddy, on their essays. They were excellent. And we are seeking to have them published in northjersey.com/theridgewoodnews. And just thank you very much. I think that will help us increase our self-response rate for Ridgewood even further.
Yeah, no, the self-response rate, I think when we started the contest, I think it was in the 60s percentage points, and we're now at 78.5%. And I have to say, you know, I like the idea that we sent them out by number, but it was incredible. You know, I have to say how impressed I was by just the quality of the writing, the thoughtfulness, and really how the students demonstrated a very strong grasp of the importance of the census. You know, the census being one of the pillars of our democracy, and the importance of it in terms of determining not only congressional seats, but most importantly now, we see the importance of it more than ever, federal funding. So I want to thank Brandon and Aiko and Theodore and all the participants who submitted their essays. It was a wonderful experience just reading through all of them, but feeling very proud that, you know, the quality of the writing that we saw. And if you want to make any comments, Brandon or Aiko, please go right ahead.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. It was a pleasure to write. I thought that the prompt was very interesting at first. And yeah, just while doing the research, I learned about my town more as well. And it was just a great opportunity to go deeper into like what Ridgewood really is, what goes into our town, the funding, representation. It was a great opportunity to learn more about where I live and the community around me. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree with everything Brandon said. And I'd also like to say thank you. I think definitely this was kind of an important thing because it got me talking to my parents about like what the census is. I mean, they did it because like I brought it up. So I think it was just, it worked. So thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. And Brandon, you know, if we were at a regular public meeting, we would have presented you with a very big check for 500 bucks. But we'll make sure we get that in the mail for you nonetheless. And Ann, thank you for taking the lead on this and really for the wonderful job that you've done in coordinating a lot of different facets of the complete count committee, not only with the essays, but also with the signage that's going up around town, for, you know, Ridgewood towns, everyone counts, and everything else that you've done. I really appreciate it. It's been really taken a lot of the heavy lifting from my side during this time, which I appreciate all the help that you provided. So thank you.
Is there an update maybe that she could provide for us? I know that some of the schools were doing contests and things like that, right?
That's right. Our superintendent, Dan Fishbein, launched a contest among all of the, all nine Ridgewood schools for, you know, how many of them, how many of them could report that parents had filled them out. And it was interesting because he reported the results every week, and then you would see a real change from week to week. So I think Ridgewood's true competitive spirit was shining through, and people were really responding to this. So I think that really helped drive up the numbers.
What happened? Uh-oh.
Oh, Ann went away. So I think if we were in a, if we were in a public meeting where the public were present, I think we would all applaud your hard work, energy, and effort. And so congratulations to both of you. So yay, great job. And Ann, wherever she went.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Ramon, you're on mute.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to comments on the public. Not to exceed three minutes per person.
You have someone? Okay. He's queuing them up. Okay. Joshua, if you could please identify yourself, name and address.
Good evening, council. My name is Josh Olivera. Address is 626 Frederick Street. I'll go on my comment. I had a couple things I wanted to bring up to the council during this week's public meeting. The first was the Board of Education budget. I was happy to hear that programming would not be affected at our schools with the latest BOE budget reduction. However, I will say it was a bit concerning that with a proposed $100 budget cut, the $600,000 local cut, and the $400,000 state cut that's proposed, that we were able to quickly identify areas where we could reduce spending that wouldn't impact the curriculum. Furthermore, as it relates to capital investment proposals in this year's budget, I do not think this is the time, particularly in the midst of economic hardship, to consider a $500,000 bathroom renovation project or a $600,000 turf field maintenance. Our town's budget, particularly in the anticipated deficit, has been a focal point of recent conversation. And as you're all aware, our tax levy related to education expenses has been consistently rising. So with that, and on that note of reducing $1 million and not affecting the curriculum, I wanted to ask the council, are there any other opportunities to reduce unnecessary and/or nonessential expenses from the BOE budget? The next item I wanted to ask the council as well was around Grayden Pool. Last week, it was discussed that $50,000 loss from the town was expected, and it seemed to be a very optimistic estimate. My understanding, based on what was made public, was that that figure was calculated with the understanding that seasonal passes would not be offered, meaning everyone would pay $10 a person, and without an understanding of capacity limits at the time. If I'm mistaken, please let me know, but it seemed like the council was in agreement last week that the loss to the town would be potentially far greater than 50,000, and 50,000 was a very optimistic estimate. To be clear, I do want the pool to open. I think it's a great sign of returning to normal. I think we need to offer this to our community, particularly since everyone has been cooped up. However, the new normal, as we've discussed, will severely impact taxpayers long term. We need to get creative and identify other revenue opportunities. So I wanted to ask the council, what other revenue opportunities is the town seeking? And also, is the council able to provide an updated estimate on this year's Grayden Pool losses? Last item, and I wanted to mention, last week I also had provided some benefits regarding potential benefits related to privatizing waste collection. Given the benefits I explained, and to ensure that we are providing the absolute best and most efficient service to our community, I asked the council if we should, or at least consider gathering information about using a private company for garbage collection. And I wanted to ask the council if we'd happen to have an update on that topic.
Mayor, could I address his question about Grayden Pool? Is that possible?
Let's wait for the rest of the public comments, and then we'll go at the end.
Okay.
Thanks.
Ms. Loving, you're up.
Hi, this is Ann Loving at 342 South Irving Street. I would like to thank you for pushing forward on Grayden. We were over there this week on foot with the dog, and we saw lots of work going on. And we also got Mayor Hache's voice message today in which, among other things, he mentioned progress on the pool. The governor has provided new looser guidelines today and yesterday. I tried to determine what the official capacity for Grayden is, and I learned that one had never been set. Regardless, with the size of Grayden, the vast size of that complex, it seems to me like we're probably not going to need half-day sessions anymore now that we're going to be allowed to have 50% of whatever the capacity is, which is great, because I think that the half-day sessions was really making the price seem very high. I know some people were talking about it on social media, that for a family of four or five buying passes, and then they could only go for half a day and so on, it was really getting quite pricey. I also think that it would be important to broadcast the capacity as soon as it's figured out what it is, which I'm thinking the half-capacity that the governor's going to allow is likely to turn out to be more than Grayden has ever seen, even on a good day. I also hope that Ms. Bigos has been able to arrange about food. I was so happy last week that you guys were thinking about getting local restaurants to help supply food, and assuming that she's been able to secure lifeguards and support staff, knowing that there are many college students that are going to be home through the fall semester. And again, I just would like to thank you for pushing ahead. This is truly a gift to the residents of Ridgewood at this time, where people are not going to be able to travel, people are short on money, people have lost jobs, and to have this pool is going to be awesome for them. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, second. Next person is Irene Bressler.
Ms. Bressler, please identify yourself.
Thank you. Irene Emanuel Bressler, 60 East Ridgewood Avenue, also known as the Town and Country Building. I don't know if any, I haven't been to any other meetings that talked about the parking garage, but I was wondering if any landlords had expressed any interest in procuring X amount of spaces on their own. Like I have five apartments, and wouldn't it be nice if I had five spots that I could offer to my tenants? Without making a penny, you know, I would promise that I would either pass it along or just charge my tenants the same amount that I was charged. And is that reasonable, unreasonable, good idea, bad idea? That's it. Thank you.
Is there someone else? Okay, that's all we have at this time?
I'm sorry, I'm having some technical issues here with my connection. All right, sounds better. That's all we have. And nobody else, Dylan? That's it?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Jeff, you wanted to address the Grayden question that was proposed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the question was, you know, what are we going to lose on Grayden this summer? And I know Bob had done some work looking at kind of the mix of having, you know, passes versus day passes versus season's passes. And based on the mix, it looks like the Grayden will probably lose this year about $100,000 from the mix. So that just addresses his gentleman's question, Mr. Oliveri. Just want to make sure he was aware of that.
I'm just going to add to that. I think that not everyone had the opportunity to review that information. And also, as things appear to be changing quite rapidly with the governor's change in orders, there's a greater likelihood with the continued sales of regular seasonal passes that in fact, we won't be losing anything. So I'm a little bit more optimistic. And I think it's really been a terrific effort over at Grayden. And based on also the question of capacity, I have to wholeheartedly agree with Mrs. Loving that the capacity is likely going to be quite greater than the, you know, the largest number of attendees ever at Grayden. So I think that we're going to be in really good shape, and I'm excited about that.
I just want to add with regard to Grayden, you know, I know there's a focus, there's an emphasis on revenue generation and profit and loss. You know, let's not forget that Grayden is first and foremost a village park. It is a village amenity. And it happens to be a one that actually generates revenue versus the other parks. So it's not really just to be looked at whether or not we can open it and make X amount of money. The importance is that this is an amenity that our community can enjoy. And I think, you know, part of the discussion really got to the heart of that, that it was, you know, having that alternative. And obviously, we didn't know a week ago or so what the reopening would look like, what the capacity would be, and the number of people that would be allowing the pool. We have the guidance now. But certainly, the later that the opening was delayed, the less revenue that would be generated. But thankfully, we were able to get the guidance of the reopening sooner rather than later. And we should be ready to open on the week of June 22nd. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, so Mayor, just to be clear, I'm, you know, I'm for opening the pool, but I just want to make sure we're transparent with our residents about the potential amount of money we're going to lose.
Oh, absolutely. No, absolutely. Absolutely, no, absolutely.
Yep.
And Heather, do we have any update on the garbage collection? That was a suggestion that was proposed at the last meeting. Do we have any chance? I know we had a kind of a crazy week with a lot of different issues. Did we get any update on that?
No, we don't have an update at this time. You know, I have to know, first of all, the village council as a whole wants to pursue it, you know, because we do have rear yard garbage pickup normally, and, you know, that's an additional cost. And I can tell you from my colleagues in Northwest Bergen County, when we meet, those who do not have their own garbage pickups, some of them are actually changing over from having private carters and haulers to their own. They're going more towards the single, you know, the one-armed bandit, you know, the one that dumps it in. So it's one person per truck. And it's a big upfront cost, obviously, for that kind of system. But once you're operating it, it's less cost because there's less personnel, less likely to have injuries, things like that. But we haven't discussed it yet. I thought I might put it onto an agenda once the new council forms after July 1st, see if they're interested in pursuing something. You know, the carters all kind of have their own territories. And so usually, my colleagues have gotten one bid. They don't get more than one bid, so it's not really a competitive environment. But certainly, it's something if the council wants to look at, we could do that.
Yeah, and it's something that I, you know, in my discussions with other municipalities that have made the change from rear yard to the one-armed bandit, that the savings associated with, you know, less, you know, workman's comp and such costs, that always seemed to be kind of floating to the top in terms of the benefits. Obviously, it's a departure from sort of the way things were done previously. Not everyone was as welcoming of the change. But, you know, specifically on the benefits that were cited was the cost savings versus rear yard pickup. And then there was the other question about the parking allocation for the overnight parking. Councilwoman Walsh, you gave a wonderful explanation this morning to the Chamber of Commerce. If you would mind answering that one.
So what I think the question was, was regarding overnight parking, because obviously, a tenant can park anywhere. We are going to have a daily fee to reserve a parking meter or designated parking stall at $20 a day, and then an overnight parking permit, overnight parking at Prospect Street Lot, Hudson Street Garage, second level, Willsey Square Parking Site, and Cottage Place Lot. And the cost is going to be $75 for three months or $150 for six months. And we're going to, this is on our agenda this evening.
I have a quick question though for Heather, because I've actually had a number of senior citizens asking about rear yard pickup, and the reason they ask is because it's one of those issues that makes, one of those amenities that makes Ridgewood comfortable to age and place. And so I've actually had folks asking, when will that be restored?
I actually have that in my manager's report, but I can't answer it now. It'll be July 13th.
Okay, good.
So it is coming.
Okay, and then just to the other issue about overnight parking for tenants that Irene raised, Irene Bressler, I think in her email, she indicated she wasn't interested in having seen the spaces vacated at that timeframe. So she, I believe her email indicated an interest in having it, those spaces allocated completely. So just to be clear on that.
And also, just adding with regard to the parking, there was also, last year, we had talked about commercial property owners being able to purchase commuter passes. And that's something that the council approved, and certainly, a commercial property owner in the downtown can also purchase commuter pass, which can be used daily.
Right, right, that's a continuation of what we have now.
Yeah, yes. All right, anybody else? Well, actually, we're done, so we're going to move on from public comments to manager's report.
Okay. Governor's orders on nonessential retail businesses, outdoor dining, and barber shops and hair salons. On June 15th, the nonessential retail businesses may be open inside on a limited basis, and outdoor dining at restaurants, food places may take place with proper social distancing guidelines, eight people, no more than eight people per table. In addition, on June 22nd, barber shops, hair salons, and nail salons may open, and they must abide by the governor's guidelines. Parking meters will go into effect on June 15th, 2020. Tens and pickup ball reservations can be done through community pass. This will allow there to be social distancing. And an email blast has gone out to all past and present players to inform them of the process to use to reserve a court time. As we know, Grayden Pool will be opening this summer, and the Parkson Recreation Department has been working diligently to get the pool ready for another wonderful summer. I am pleased to let you know that the concession stand will be open with our usual vendor. We went back to our current vendor, and we negotiated with him with a different price, and, but he is still paying us to be able to provide the concession. And we're looking forward to having that available for those who go to Grayden. Seasonal memberships will be sold, and I'm going to have an update next week about the hours and the day passes versus the seasonal. And more information, I know that Nancy Bigos, the director of Parkson Recreation, as well as Steve Diamond, the director of the pool area, have been in various meetings for their associations. And so they have more information, and they will be bringing a proposal to us next week. I just want to remind everyone that the skateboard park is also open. And another great piece of information is due to the fact that the governor's order allows larger groups to gather. The Cash Out Memorial Shell programs will begin on Tuesday, June 16th, with the Stilettos with Horns, which is a rock and roll band. The programs begin at 8:30 PM, and they're free to the public. Attendees are asked to social distance. I think we may have guidelines like on the field where people can sit. Obviously, if you're with your family, you can sit next to them. And we, you know, when you're in the crowd, we ask that you wear a mask. If you're sitting with your family, you know, usually that's when you can remove your mask, as long as there's no one directly next to you. I want to also let you know that items such as glass knees guards have been ordered to make our village offices safer for both the public and the village employees. Once we receive them, they will be installed, and that'll bring us one step closer to opening up village offices to the public. Rear yard garbage pickup will resume on June 13th, as I mentioned. Until that time, garbage will continue to be picked up curbside. Renewal of dog licenses, I just want to remind everyone that they should get their rabies vaccines for their dogs. That being said, since the village hall is currently closed to the public, the village will extend the time period to renew the dog licenses without a late fee until September 1st. Again, based on tonight's award of the essay contest, the US Census continues. We ask that you please participate. We're at 78.5%, our goal is 100%, so please continue to fill it out. That information is on the website as to how you can do so. Please be aware that all the census information that you submit is confidential. The recycling center, I just want to remind you, is open. We ask that you please put all of your recyclables in your trunk and pull up, and then open the trunk, and then our crews will take it out and dump it. And then if you have bags that you want back, they'll give that back to you, and then you can go on your way. This will make sure that we maintain the social distancing, and it's a more fluid process at the recycling center. Also, I just want to remind everyone that if you do have yard waste, it does have to be in cans or biodegradable paper bags. You can't just bring them loose. If you have brush or twigs, please tie them. And again, if you would put them in your trunk, then our crews can get them easily. No commercial landscapers will be accepted. We are accepting the cardboard from the Central Business District, so they can bring them there. Again, I want to update you on the primary election. That will be a mail-in ballot and voting in a few polling locations in each town. I think we're going to have three or four. And that's only for those with disabilities who cannot vote by mail. If a voter is registered as a Republican or a Democrat, a mail-in ballot will be sent to the voter for that party. If you're unaffiliated, you will receive a mail-in ballot application. At that point, you'll have to declare a party in order to vote, and then that particular party's ballot will be sent to you. As a reminder, the primary election is to elect the candidates to move forward to the general election in November. The final voter registration for the primary election is due to the county by June 16th. Again, our annual farmer's market will begin on June 28th. Locally grown produce will have social distancing measures there as well. And we ask that you do wear a mask. It's on Sundays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And our next meetings are June 17th. Next week, we have a village council work session and special public meeting. And then our next meeting after that is our July 1 reorganization meeting. That begins at 12:00 noon. So we will be streaming that as well as having it on Zoom, according to Dylan, our IT director. And so we look forward to having you join us. It's a Wednesday, and if you're at home and would like to join us via Zoom or watch it streaming, we'd love to have you there. That's it.
All right, thank you, Heather. We'll move on to council reports. Councilman Seaton?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this week.
All right, short and sweet. Deputy Mayor Knudsen?
Thank you. Just to remind everyone to please visit visionridgewood.org and add your comments to the public comment for the visioning process and master plan. That's at visionridgewood.org, and that has been extended to the end of June. There will be some updates on that website to make it a little bit more seamless and allow you to cherry pick what you want to comment on, and Vision Ridgewood. Also, the planning board will meet next week, Tuesday evening, 7:30, right here in Zoom. Why you say right here at village hall, right here on Zoom. And very important to note that we will have the public hearing on the third round housing element and fair share plan amendments to the master plan. So that's really, really important, a lot of public interest in that. So please note, and we will make certain that that is posted and sent out by email. So just check that out. And finally, as Cash Out Shell, I just want to shout out to the Stilettos. They practiced around the corner Saturday afternoon, because they live right around the corner. And they really sounded terrific, so everyone should go and listen and check them out, because they are wonderful. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
So the only thing I have to report is my chamber. We had our chamber meeting this morning, and the chamber had the mayor swear in their new officers. Let me read the officers to you. Scott Leith is going to continue as president. Vice president is Lisa Samotaro. Secretary is Elise Merhigie, and the treasurer is Rob Dowling. And they intend to have a celebration in August to celebrate the swearing in then. We talked about the new curbside changes that are going to be happening. And I'll let, when the mayor does his report, I'll let him talk about that a little bit more. But they were very happy with the changes that are coming, the ability for them to have outdoor dining again. They're all going to start submitting for their permits so that they are compliant and have the correct number of seats. They're going to have the correct distances apart, so they really are engaged in that conversation. So we're really, we're really happy for them that they're going to get to be able to really start showing their wares, the businesses, and start getting things going in the downtown again. The other thing, Paul Vajanos called me later in the afternoon, talking about the, right now, there are spots that are designated for pickup, and the hope is that those spots now will, even though we're going to be reducing those number, that there might be one spot per block, that the businesses can actually, you know, in the old days, we used to bag a meter and they'd pay for it. They're hoping that they can continue some of those spots, and the businesses pay for them. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilman Boyd?
I have nothing to report, Mayor, but I wanted to follow up on Bernadette's suggestion from Paul Vajanos. I know he talked to a couple of us today, and I think he's looking for not just one spot, he's looking for a couple of spots in front of restaurants, or three spots, which the restaurants would pay for. And, you know, the thought would be that they could certainly use those for a curbside pickup for the restaurants. But anybody who needed the spot for like a minute or two could probably pull in if they wanted to go to UPS or whatever. And they, Paul was very high on this. I would imagine many of the other restaurant owners maybe as well, and hopefully, we'll speak about that tonight.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything really new to report. Between the village manager and Councilman Walsh, it was covered. I will add, because there was a lot of businesses that had reached out in the last couple of weeks regarding their concern for the loss of the pickup areas. And obviously, as our downtown reopens, you know, beyond the restaurants and the retailers, we also have professionals who work above those locations. So, you know, parking, once again, becomes very precious. And hopefully, the demand for it will be a sign of how many people are returning back to the downtown. But there was a lot of discussion about that. Maybe we can designate a couple of spots per block, and the businesses can have a runner or somebody that can go back and forth with the vehicles. The plan with the spots being paid for by the businesses, I think, is actually a good plan. I think that can make a lot of sense. And part of the discussion was that it wouldn't necessarily be all day, that, you know, for, you know, for some of the restaurants, some of the businesses that wanted to pay for the spots. And the signage will be very clear, saying, you know, after 5:00 PM, this is a pickup-only area, parking limit of, you know, 15 minutes. That way, if anybody wanted to use that spot for anything else, that, you know, they could use it, they could pop in and out. We've been talking about that type of designation for spots for pickup. I know that Sergeant Chuck and the village manager have been talking about it, trying to figure out what would be the best way to distribute those spots and strategically throughout the downtown. So once we get a little more guidance from them, we'll be able to look at what that could look like, so. But obviously, you know, given the current situation, I think people have grown accustomed to using the pickup spots. We certainly want to be able to help our businesses, you know, thrive as much as we can, so. And that's it, so we'll...
Mayor Hache, could I ask you to comment on what we're planning come June 15th? Because there may be some people who haven't heard about it yet. And I think it's very exciting for our businesses and for reopening Ridgewood.
Sure, so we're reopening, as I sent messages yesterday and a robocall this morning. There's a reopening of the downtown. I mean, we're officially, you know, opening up for business again. So not only are stores reopening, but also our parking meters will be back on. Just a reminder for everybody to be mindful of that. The reopening, as was dictated by the lifting of the restrictions, you know, will now allow restaurants to do outdoor dining, and retail can have, you know, indoor activities once again. You know, the general guidelines now is for indoor gatherings being 25% of building capacity, or 50 people, whichever is less. A little bit more challenging to determine for a retail business, because your capacity, obviously, it's not your real capacity, because you have tables, you have merchandise, you have racks. So really, what we're asking as a general guideline is to allow as many people as can safely social distance inside of your establishment. So as long as you can have enough space between your customers of six feet apart, you know, that's your limit. It's not necessarily the capacity of the building from a building code or, you know, fire code standpoint. Already, if you walk into downtown today, you would see that the sidewalks have been marked. We have directional arrows for pedestrians on the sidewalks, and we also have paint tick mark spots to designate, you know, every six feet, so to help serve as a visual guide for social distancing. We're encouraging shoppers and diners to use the One Direction, the One Way on the sidewalks Monday to Friday. And on the weekends, we're definitely going to have volunteers. And on the weekends, we, we're definitely going to have volunteers directing shoppers and diners to do that. The weekends, we're expecting there are going to be more of a concern as more people come into the downtown. And again, from a safety standpoint, you know, our sidewalks unfortunately are not wide enough to be able to accommodate two-way pedestrian traffic with six feet apart and also allowing for tables and merchandise to be on, on, on the sidewalks. But again, very exciting time. Right now, the, the last remaining piece of the reopening plan. We have put together a package that I believe went out today from code enforcement. It was distributed to the chamber and the guild, and they're in turn going to circulate it to the, to the, to, to the businesses. And it's going to be sort of a list of guidelines. And we had Don Zitrula help us with that. And there will be separate guidelines on that list, some pertaining to restaurants, others pertaining to retail. But it's all in one document. And, you know, we're, we're asking our businesses to, to pledge to follow those, those guidelines. And we're going to ask them to sign on to that. And it's really, you know, I think indicative for any shopper and diner coming to the downtown of how serious those businesses are about their safety and, and well-being. So that's the last remaining step. We have posted on the website, I believe Dylan did it today. The, the map of what the, the weekend street closures will look like. So again, Monday through Friday, it's no, no different than, than any other previous days in, in the downtown. Except you, you'll probably see less tables from the restaurants, again, because of the, the necessary distance required for proper social distancing. And on the weekends, it will look quite different. And you'll see on the map what, what the closures would, 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 would be. And there was one thing that was pointed out, Heather. Part of the requirement from the fire department to be able to move emergency, any vehicles in case of an emergency was that we, we leave a ten-foot strip on the center line of the streets. And apparently, the, on some streets, it was ten and a half feet, and others it was thirteen, and in others was fourteen feet. I know Chief Ben Gore was made aware of that today. So we're asking for, in case we have not been able to correct those lines by Monday. That, that the chamber will go out and tell the businesses that, to measure out five feet from the center line. And that becomes sort of the, you know, the, the, the barrier.
Okay.
All right. And then the other things that we had discussed as well was for restaurants, in order to be able to, to decrease the required distance of six feet between tables. And, and again, Don Zitrula was part of the conversation and felt that that was an appropriate measure, was to allow them to hang kind of clear, like shower curtains between tables. And obviously, with that physical barrier, that would allow the, the distance between tables to be shortened significantly. And again, that, that would allow for, for greater, or maximum utilization of the outdoor space for, for the businesses. So I guess I have more to say than I thought I did.
And the only thing, and the only thing I wanted to mention that you may have, are during the week, the retail businesses will be able to have tables out as if we were having sidewalk sale days. And so they will also have their goods out on the, on the sidewalks and within their stores as well. So, you know, it'll give them additional ability to have customers see what they're selling.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there are no ordinances for Ridgewood Water. I'll move on to the resolutions. The following resolutions, number twenty dash one fifty-one through twenty dash one fifty-two, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. It will be read, each resolution will be read by title only. Award contract under Bergen County contract by Tumulus Concrete and various road repair materials. Authorized change order servicing and repairing of portable water pumping facilities. Have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-seven ninety-eight by title on second reading that the public hearing there on be open.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-seven ninety-eight?
An ordinance to amend chapter two sixty-five of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood vehicles and traffic. At section two sixty-five dash twenty-nine, parking meter zones designated. And section two sixty-five dash thirty-two, payment of parking fee required. And section two sixty-five dash thirty-three, permit parking. And section two sixty-five dash thirty-six, parking prohibited certain hours. And section two sixty-five dash forty-two, reserved parking spaces.
Public hearing is now open.
I'm showing no hands. Does anybody want to make a public comment? Please raise your hand. I'm showing none. We have no dialings.
Okay. I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-seven ninety-eight be adopted on second reading with final publication as required by law.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance thirty-seven ninety-nine by title on second reading that the public hearing there on be open.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. Will the clerk please read, read the title of ordinance thirty-seven ninety-nine?
An ordinance to amend chapter one forty-five of the Code of the Village of Ridgewood fees. At section one forty-five dash six, enumeration of fees relating to code chapters.
The public hearing is now open.
Anybody have a public comment? Please raise your hand. I'm showing none. And we have no dialings as well.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty-seven ninety-nine be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. I move the clerk read, read ordinance thirty, thirty-eight hundred by title on second reading that the public hearing there on be open.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance thirty-eight hundred?
An ordinance appropriating one million nine hundred thousand dollars, one million five hundred thousand of which is from the Water Capital Improvement Fund. And four hundred thousand dollars of which is from the water capital surplus for renovations to the Oth Club in and by the Village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey.
The public hearing is now open.
Anybody having a public comment? Please raise your hand. I'm showing none and no dialings.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes.
I move that ordinance thirty, thirty-eight hundred be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
Second.
Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
No.
Walsh?
No.
And Hache?
Yes.
The following resolutions, number twenty dash one fifty-three through twenty dash one seventy, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. It will be read by title only. Title fifty-nine approval crossing guard services, award contract crossing guard services. Title fifty-nine approval resurfacing of Ridgewood High School tennis courts. Award contract resurfacing of Ridgewood High School tennis courts. Title fifty-nine approval installation, service and repair of police, fire, EMS, OEM and DPW emergency equipment and radios. Award contract installation, service and repair of police, fire, EMS, OEM and DPW emergency equipment and radios. Award contract under state contract packer trucks solid waste. Award contract in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, final phase of security upgrade, village hall, bathrooms and recycling center. Authorized change order valid community health or nursing services COVID-nineteen. Declare property surplus loader tires from the streets department. Declare property surplus two front-end loaders, Department of Public Works. Declare property surplus Ford Taurus wagon, Building Department. Declare property surplus three pickup trucks, Signal Division. Declare property surplus batch basin cleaner, Streets Division. Authorized execution of documents for periodic reporting to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, North Walnut Street Parking Lot. Accept donation Conservancy for Ridgewood Public Lands, renewal of Memorial Park of Van Ness Square. Approve an enforcement agreement, twenty-two Chestnut Street. Authorized execution of settlement agreement with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, underground storage tank facility at Village Central Garage. May I have a motion?
Heather, can I make a comment just real quick? I just realized that twenty-one sixty-eight, I was one of the people that donated to that project, and I had recused myself. So should I just recuse from the entire consent or, or can we pull that one? And I'll just recuse from that one.
I'll ask Matt what he thinks.
Should I just recuse?
Let me just unmute. I think it.
I forgot to ask her to pull it.
Yeah. I, I guess it's, it's easy is probably.
To just refuse from all?
Recuse from all, but at the same time, you want to get your vote in on, on those other ones too. So.
Yeah.
Other than that, you just have to amend the, you have to take it out and move, make an application.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Yeah, just make an application, you know, for the, for the council to decide to remove that one from the consent agenda and vote on it separately.
Okay, so.
Either way, you want to make a motion, Bernie?
Yeah, so can I make a motion to just remove the one item twenty-one sixty-eight from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Wait, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm glad you picked it up, Bernie.
Yeah, I was, as I was going line by line, I was like, shoot, I forgot about that one.
Okay, so we'll vote on all of them except.
Yeah.
One sixty-eight, and then we'll leave that separately. All right.
And thank you, thank you for the donation.
It looks beautiful. I mean, it looks really great. They did a great job.
So I'm, I'm going to move the consent agenda with the twenty dash one six eight removed.
Okay, so that's, and a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes.
Okay, so ninety dash one sixty-eight, hold on one sec, let me grab that one. Okay. Whereas the renewal of Memorial Park of Van Ness Square was a project undertaken by the Conservancy of Ridgewood Public Lands. Whereas the project included removal of shrubs and old plantings around the war memorial, as well as the installation of new planters, seasonal plants, and new benches in order to create a fitting tribute to our fallen heroes. Whereas the Conservancy for Ridgewood Public Lands has completed the project of the renewal of Memorial Park of Van Ness Square. Would like to donate the project to the Village of Ridgewood. Whereas the value of the renewal of Memorial Park of Van Ness Square project is thirty thousand dollars. Whereas the Village of Ridgewood is interested in accepting this donation to enhance the area around the war memorial. Whereas the Conservancy for Ridgewood Public Lands does not have any applications before a village board or committee at the present time. Now therefore be resolved by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood. As the Village of Ridgewood gratefully accepts this donation from the Conservancy for Ridgewood Public Lands. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so. Knutson?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Walsh, recuse, and Hache?
Yes.
And the next one that's off of the consent agenda is ninety, I'm sorry, twenty dash one seventy. Whereas, I'm sorry.
One seventy-one.
One seventy-one, I'm sorry. Whereas, the Village of Ridgewood has need to replace the current phone system that is no longer being manufactured and to purchase a new IP-based phone system. Whereas the Village of Ridgewood purchases supplies through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program under contract number zero-two-two-seven-one-nine-dash-NBS, expiring April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas NJAC four-five-colon-thirty-four-dash-seven-point-two-nine requires that purchases made under cooperative purchasing programs be authorized by village council resolution. Now therefore, be resolved by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood that for the purchase of high availability Mytel Virtualized Unified Communication Solution My Voice Business Enterprise with Resiliency On-Premise Option Phone System. The following Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program vendor be affirmed. E O I P Networks, nineteen fifty-one Old Tuffbert Road, Suite two oh six, Jerry Hill, New Jersey, zero eight zero three four. And the amount now to receive is two hundred thirty thousand dollars. And be further resolved, Chief Financial Officer has certified that funds are available. Account number C dash zero four dash five five dash nine C eight dash two four seven. So may I have a motion for that?
Can I make a comment on this one, Heather?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the council received an email this week of protest. One of the bidders apparently bid some thirty thousand dollars less. When we originally discussed this last week, I, I personally, I, I don't know if anybody else had information on the different costs of all the bids. And I'm, I guess I'm just wondering if Matt can tell us a little bit about what happens when somebody protests something like this? Because I don't recall us ever having a protest before.
Just want to make sure I'm on. Yeah, I was, I was made aware of the protest that, that, at the end of last week, the this is, it's not a bid process because it's, it doesn't participate. We went through the state contract. And so we're looking for a specific type of materials. This, from what I understand, the lowest bidder, who submitted, not bidder, but the lowest cost estimate that was given and provided on this did not include the type of materials that are, were to use and that we want to do, that the village wanted to use and continue to use with regard to, sorry about the, about the that, that was part of what we were looking for from the state contract. So in cooperative purchasing, you know, we're looking for some specific things and, and that was not included in that other bid. So, or that other response. So that's why, when you have a protest, there's a potential that it's litigation. You don't know. But a protest in, in terms of, in terms of this, because there was a differing, different type of product. I, I think that the, the decision to go ahead with what we needed for our system and wanted for our system was the, was the one that it seems to be awarded to. And, and that's why I believe, you know, there may have been, you know, that, that's why I believe the, the resolution's on the table. I also understand the protest and why there was a concern by that particular entity, XTEL. But at the same time, it didn't provide the materials that were, that the, that the village was looking for. So.
Can, can the lower bidder provide those materials? I mean, can, you'd see if.
From what I, yeah, Jeff, from what I understand, when you're in state contract, you help, you hold a particular agreement or contract to provide certain materials and and you are the representative for that provider in the area. And in this case, XTEL did not provide those materials that we were looking for. That's what I, that's what I've been told. That's what I understand.
So I'd actually just would like to table, we have a special public meeting next week, correct?
Yes.
So what I'd like to do is make a motion to table this until, I think we have all the details with some level of specificity to understand what those differences were because thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And the question is whether or not, I guess, I suppose, one system versus the other system has certain bells and whistles or, or whatever. But I, I think I, for me, like a comfort level, and I'm not, I think that everybody who was involved in the process feels comfortable. But because of that protest, I think I would like to at least better understand the differences in these systems and, and that difference in. the differences in these systems and, and that difference in, in uh, cost. So I'd make a motion to table it and bring it back uh, after village council has um, additional information, bring it back next week. And that we can make a determination then, if that would work for everyone, that would be my recommendation.
Second.
So, so we have a motion second, okay?
Yep.
So let me um, do a roll call on continuing it to um, next week's special public meeting.
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Voight?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes.
So that'll be on for um, discussion first next week and then um, also on the special public meeting. Um, that, which will be part of that work session.
And then just for our, just so we all understand, Heather, um, perhaps we can get what the specifications were, what exactly we were looking for. Um, whether or not the um, the first uh, that one system had all, met all those requirements and whether or not there was something over and above. And the other one, I think we have to have a really good understanding of what this system happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just taking notes, hold on one sec. Okay, so then our um, last resolution twenty dash one seventy-two will be ready to call. A resolution to temporarily suspend the enforcement of certain ordinances in the village of Ridgewood to permit the reopening of businesses in the central business district. Whereas the village council of the village of Ridgewood has taken significant steps to provide assistance to the property owners of businesses in central business district during the declaration of a state of emergency and public health emergency due to coronavirus COVID nineteen. The state of emergency and public health emergency was issued by way of executive orders number one oh three by Governor Phil Murphy on March ninth, two thousand twenty. And whereas by way of executive order number one oh seven issued by the governor on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty, restrictions were expanded on social distancing. This order closed all non-essential retail businesses and permitted specific identified businesses to continue to operate. Executive Order number one oh seven also mandated restrictions for the operation of restaurants, cafeterias, dining establishments, and food courts and that they could remain open but only offer delivery and takeout while maintaining social distancing requirements. Similarly, restrictions were established for businesses holding liquor licenses, liquor stores, and other retail consumption licensed businesses. And whereas the village council desires to convert local businesses in the central business district to reopen consistent with the limitations and restrictions placed on their operation by the presently existing executive orders issued by the governor's office. Members of the village council, police department, building department, engineering department, manager's office, and other departments whose support was being relevant, met with owners and business operators of the central business district, the Ridgewood Chamber of Commerce, the Ridgewood Guild, and other interested parties to develop a plan that would provide businesses the opportunity to reopen on a limited basis on specific nights and dates in specific designated areas of the central business district. And whereas the village council has developed a plan to enhance outdoor dining, outdoor retail sales, and other accommodations, it will permit these local businesses to reopen and adhere to the restrictions on social distancing and precautionary controls for maintaining the health and safety of the patrons, staff, village employees, and other persons who may be involved in the opening of the plan. A plan area map has been prepared and designated as the area on which the reopening shall take place, which shall be made part of this resolution. Any restrictions placed on the reopening of businesses pursuant to the plan must be consistent with the directors of the governor's office, state and municipal health departments, and the issued executive orders and be maintained at all times of operation by the participating businesses. And whereas reopening plan also permits restaurants and retail businesses that are not located in the plan area map to participate in the reopening plan as arrangements and space have been designated on adjacent sidewalk areas to the businesses to permit outdoor dining and retail displays to comply with distancing and precautionary controls for maintaining health and safety of patrons, staff, village employees, and other persons who may be involved in the opening of the respective businesses. And whereas in order to put the plan into place, the village council must temporarily suspend the enforcement of several ordinances to control the parking, vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, outdoor dining, and any other regulation that is not consistent with the eventual devised plan that permits a reopening of the local businesses in central business district. Whereas businesses that wish to participate in the proposed reopening plan must file all required applications, execute all required documents, provide all required information, and adhere to all required restrictions and directives of the village departments, and set forth in the applicable executive orders. If a participant fails to satisfy the requirements of the reopening plan or fails to maintain the required social distancing directives and other restrictions, the village may revoke the permission of that business entity to participate. Now therefore be it resolved by the village of council of the village of Ridgewood, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. The village council endorses the central business district reopening plan and plan area map and directs employees of the village police department and building department and any other employees designated to enforce the parking regulations in the designated plan area map to suspend the enforcement of the village ordinances that are not consistent with the reopening plan. And be further resolved that any participating businesses in the reopening plan shall adhere to any and all directives and restrictions in the executive orders in effect issued by the governor's office and the state department of health. Failure to abide by those requirements may cause the forfeiture of a business's participation in the reopening plan as determined by the sole discretion of the village manager. And be further resolved that the reopening plan shall set forth the appropriate standards and distances for tables, displays, service, pedestrian traffic, and other requirements that are consistent with and conform to the requirements of the executive orders and any state and municipal department of health directives in effect. These standards and distances must be maintained and enforced by the participating businesses. And be further resolved that the building department, police department, and engineering department shall then apply for the purposes of notification to the participating businesses and patrons, the village code sections that shall be suspended and not enforced in order to affect the reopening plan of the central business district. Those code sections shall be made a part of this resolution. May I have a motion?
So I, I need to make one more comment. And Ramon, we forgot. Um, there is an individual who is going to be donating uh, the first few weeks' cost to the village. So I don't know if you want to talk about that, Ramon? It was talked about in our, our meeting this morning.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that's, needs to be included in the, in the ordinance. But I think that's, I mean, we can have a discussion about it, um, but I don't think it's relative to the, to the ordinance, what we need at least to have.
Resolution.
Okay.
Sorry, the resolution.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Newton?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Voight?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And Hache?
Yes. All right, we'll uh, go back to public comments, not to exceed five minutes per person.
Okay, I got it. And Loving?
Is Loving?
No, it's Mr. Loving. Good, good afternoon. Oh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Boyd Loving, three forty-two South Irving Street. Um, the first thing I'd like to say is I'm somewhat concerned that Ms. Walsh or Councilwoman Walsh just asked that the name of a large donor be revealed, and that name was not revealed. And I'm wondering why the name of a donor has not been made public. And um, we'll investigate this further later on down the road. Um, another comment I'd like to make is I was pleased tonight to hear that the manager reported that Sneeze Guards have been ordered to be placed at Village Hall, and we can look forward to Village Hall reopening sometime in the near future. Along those same lines, I'm wondering if the council has set in, in place a plan to begin meeting in person. I see that there have been pictures posted on northjersey.com of several boards of education that are meeting in person with the public attending and the audience faced out appropriately and wearing masks. And I'm wondering when I can look forward to attending a village council meeting again in person. Uh, in particular, there are two brand-new council members being sworn in on July first. I understand you have already made plans to conduct that session by Zoom, but I'm wondering if some consideration can be given, if there is good weather to conducting the session at the Cash Out Show on the stage so people can sit uh, in the grass and be spaced out and watch it in person. It would be nice to see the two council people being sworn in. Green. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next. Is it dialing? Eight four two seven?
Please identify yourself, name and address. Follow.
Is that me?
Yes, that's you.
Oh, okay. Uh, my name is Pamela Perrin. I live at one-two-three Kennelworth Road. And I just wanted to alert you to the fact that there was a remarkable event in Ridgewood this afternoon. Hundreds of people gathered at Garber Square and walked over to the parking lot at uh, at the Y to protest uh, police violence in several incidences um, with uh, George Floyd's murder and Ahmaud Arbery and Breonna Taylor and others. And it was respectful, thoughtful, peaceful, and very well-run by the MLK Committee of Ridgewood and Glen Rock, the Community Peace and Justice Forum, and the Interfaith Community. And our police chief was the first speaker, and she really sets the tone of calm and trust, and um, I, I just want to commend her and all my neighbors. It was a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is eight-nine-three-seven?
Please identify.
Hi, how are you?
Okay.
Hi, yes, Melanie Huben, four thirty-one Bogert Ave. Um, I called in tonight. Uh, I would like to, you know, bring up something I brought up to the council, I believe about a year ago. Um, and that was the pricing and the family cap option for your determination of, of pricing at Grayden Pool. Um, I booked, I bought my uh, passes this year um, at Grayden as soon as I heard that we were probably going to open. I always look to support the pool. I attend, I've always come to the pool every year since I was a child. And when my total came up and I paid and it was over six hundred dollars, and I, you know, I put the question out to the community and I, I received some feedback, which was that that is exorbitant for any pool, for any of the local pools with um, significantly, you know, maybe, maybe some people might consider more um, you know, uh, accessories or, or options available. Um, and I made that purchase with the, with the knowledge that there would be half-day options or um, no concession stands. And actually, I ended up withdrawing and canceling my membership, which pains me because I really like to support the community and I'm well-involved in, in town. And um, I think you guys need to really consider families in town, you know, with maybe more than the two-point-two children or, you know, that want uh, to participate in our local activities. If you had factored in the camp this year and I had been able to put two or three children in, I'd be looking at, you know, well over two thousand dollars for a summer membership at my town pool. Um, so I asked you guys about this last year, about a family cap for the camp, I believe, and the prices just go up every year. Every year they continue to rise exponentially and, and um, I think that it's, it's time for, for you guys to address the pricing at the pool. Um, and the second op, uh, thing that I called in tonight was that um, a couple of years ago, I spent about eight years or so of the twelve years I've lived on Bogert Ave, um, working towards finding a way for there to be safe parking on the street and safe um, resident use of the street. There is no sidewalk, there are curves on all four corners of the loop of the Cambridge Bogert Loop. I spent eight years providing photographs and evidence to the Citizen Safety Advisory Committee requesting that safety be put as a, as a priority there. We had some parking changes placed on the street. And um, one resident was able to overturn those parking changes, which you guys said you would look into. I had every single one of you, all five of you, I believe, came and looked. Um, either you lived on the street, um, Bernie, Walsh, I know, I know Councilwoman Walsh lived on the street and, and experienced some of what, what I had spoken about in my many, many, many um, conversations with Citizen Safety Advisory or the council. And um, a former councilman lived on the street right in the curve where there are no sidewalks and much parking. Um, it has come to be a bigger issue as we have been on quarantine. There is um, much more, you know, many more people are home, there's much more parking on the street, the on-street parking regulations have been suspended, and many more children at home riding bikes and skateboards and scooters out into the street. And you guys, when you overturned this parking based on the evidence of one resident, had mentioned that you would be taking a look at this further in depth, and this is now going on at least two years, three years ago. And I'm uh, calling in tonight, my second reason is to request that you take a very significant look at the street. We are um, across the street from a school. I believe we fall into the safe routes um, category and actually with the paving that's been done on the street and the measurements and width of the street, I believe we fall into a category where we should actually have sidewalks at this point. And I'd like for you to take this very seriously under consideration, the putting, placement of sidewalks on the Bogert Cambridge Loop, and certainly stricter parking regulations at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Yeah.
I show no others.
That's it, nobody else? All right.
I just want to make a quick comment on the last comment regarding Bogert, that it wasn't one resident who overturned it, that it was a petition of, I believe, no less than maybe thirty residents in the neighborhood. And it's something certainly we can revisit and have a community-wide conversation with all the neighbors to see how to best approach it. But I just, I think we would be remiss if we allowed the suggestion that it was one resident, uh, because it was not. It was quite a number of residents that signed a petition uh, requesting that we reverse that and revisit. And I, I believe actually we did revisit and made some modifications to that, so just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, thank you, and that's a good clarification. Uh, all right, if we have nothing else, uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, be safe.
Bye, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.